Good evening, Tingsboro residents, and welcome to the August twenty-second Select Board Meeting. My name is Ron Cohane. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Every meeting I need to read the following. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro TV. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Comcast and Verizon FiOS and is a livestream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear and one to my left. And with that, I ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask the Board to introduce themselves, starting from my far left.
Yes. Good evening, Shannon McAndrew, Executive Assistant.
Hi, good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Eric Eldridge.
Good evening, Katerina Kalabokas.
Good evening, Matt Hanson, Town Administrator.
Thank you. And with that, let's jump right into the meeting minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the regular session meeting minutes for August first, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes four zero zero. Can I have a motion for the executive session meeting minutes, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve but not release the executive session meeting minutes for August first, 2022.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes four zero zero. Citizens of business time, would anybody like to address the Board? Seeing none. First on the list is the Police Officer Appointment. Deputy.
Chairman Cohane, would you like to wait until Chief Power reps?
If you would wish. We'll start with the Conservation Director, but after that, I don't know how much longer, it might be a little bit longer, but let's go to the Conservation Director.
All right. Emily, since you came tonight, you can come grab a seat at the table just so I can introduce you.
Come on up.
Oh, yeah, or microphone at any table. So, Board Members, this is Emily Brush.
Welcome, Emily.
Recommending her appointment to the Conservation Director position. She recently graduated from St. Anson College with a degree in environmental science, and after that she spent a year working with AmeriCorps in Barnstable County. She conducted fieldwork and delivered educational programming regarding local environmental challenges, and we received positive feedback from several of her former supervisors who highly recommended her for this position. The rate of pay is $65,000 annually, and she's available to begin working Monday, August 29th. The only pre-employment condition will be a successful Cory check and a state-mandated conflict-of-interest training. So I want to welcome her this evening.
Yes, welcome. Is there anything you would like to say, or would you just want us to discuss?
Um, no, I just thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited to get started.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Matt, or hopefully our new Conservation Director?
No questions.
Yeah, everything looks good.
Just wanted to note, in case you didn't see, she actually grew up and lives here in Tingsboro, so we really lucked out with her experience to have somebody like us, so we're excited.
Well, thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Emily Brush to the position of Conservation Director in the Conservation Department at the rate of $65,000 annually, with a start date of August 29th, 2022.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes four zero zero. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Chief, don't sit down. Oh, you already sat down. We're trying to get you in and out quick.
Raced over here as fast as I could.
Employees come first, as we've already talked about earlier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're up.
All right, thank you for having us here tonight. We're here for a Police Officer Recommendation. As you know, we have a vacancy, and this is to fill that vacancy. I'm proud to recommend the appointment of Brian Carter, effective Thursday, August 25th, as a full-time police officer for the town of Tingsboro. The department recently conducted a hiring process, which included a job posting by Human Resources, a resume review, initial interviews by members of the department's command staff. A select number of candidates were then recommended for a final interview with Administrator Hanson, Assistant Administrator Loizelle, Deputy Chief Woods, and myself. Brian Carter currently resides in Hudson, Massachusetts, excuse me, is a 2013 graduate of Hudson High School, 2020 graduate of the University of Massachusetts in Boston. He received a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice, as well as a minor in psychology, and was also a four-year member of the UMass Boston Hockey Team. Mr. Carter was impressive in both interviews, where he displayed confidence, motivation, and professionalism. Mr. Carter also displayed a complete understanding of what is required to be a police officer as a result of recent police reform legislation in Massachusetts, as well as the high ethical standards that all officers for the town of Tingsboro are required to meet, both on and off-duty. As part of our stringent pre-employment background process, Mr. Carter successfully passed a medical examination, psychological assessment, and physical fitness test. Once employed as a full-time police officer, Brian Carter will be enrolled in the municipal Police Training Committee's Police Academy, scheduled to begin on September 19th, 2022. Successful completion of this Recruit Officer Course is required under MGL Chapter 4196B. This training all takes approximately 20 weeks and covers 21st century policing practices with specific emphasis on the following core principles: problem-solving, procedural justice, ethical decision-making, and fair and impartial policing. I have full confidence that Brian will become a valuable member of our team, and he possesses the qualities necessary to professionally serve as a police officer for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the Chief, or the Deputy Chief? I don't have any questions either. We, you know, we know you do a thorough job of, you know, going through this, and we appreciate that. Is this your last opening? Is this your last opening?
We will be at full staff for the first time in roughly three years as a result of this.
Excellent.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to appoint Brian Carter to the position of full-time police officer contingent upon the successful completion of the requirements laid out in this letter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes four zero zero.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Welcome aboard.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Emily, watch this. They're gonna leave, they're not gonna stay for our whole meeting, because they know it's gonna be a long one, so don't feel obligated if you want to follow them out. You're happy to stay, but...
Good night.
All police work to do. What were they doing today?
Next on the agenda, Host Community Agreement. Can I welcome MJ's Market to the table? We're gonna have you give your say, and then we'll ask you to have a seat, and we'll have a discussion. Welcome back. The floor is yours.
Hi, good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us again. Hopefully you received all the information that we supplied to you from the questions and things of that nature. I guess the most recent information that we, that we, well, I guess, first, are there any questions from all the information that we provided? I know there was information that we can provide and information that we can't, like financials and things of that nature. We did hopefully show enough sustainable with the CPA letter from our investment group, but in, you know, going through a litigation process, it's very difficult to share and open information. It's kind of like opening your playbook and then going to play in a football game with the whole world to see, right? So it's a, so that's a difficult process. But I do believe we provide a lot of info, as much information as we possibly could to you, and I'm wondering if there's any questions on that information to start with.
Well, you want to kind of give everybody a brief overview of what you kind of submitted to us, you know, key things that were, you know...
Sure. I guess if you'd like, how long is the letter? I'll read the letter to you. "Thank you to the Chair and the entire Board of Selectmen for your efforts to help MJ's Market open the second cannabis dispensary in Tingsboro. Since 2018, MJ has been committed to opening a dispensary in the town of Tingsboro, and will continue to fight diligently, and we will do all we can to ensure we proceed forward and open as fast as possible. As it resides today, we have been, we have a sizable multi-state company selectively choosing projects to litigate and attempt to break their competitors while allowing no objectionable projects to, while allowing other or no objectionable projects to continue. Thus, we came before you and the Board to talk about a viable solution." And in this letter, I guess, I won't read it verbatim, but in this letter, we talk about ideally getting together with all groups and parties involved and coming to a solution, right? And one of the things that I reflected in this letter is Market Basket case, and it actually goes into the case details, but Market Basket and Shop &amp; Save down in Tingsboro, I mean, in Chelmsford, I'm sure we all remember that Route 3 Cinema, probably went back in the day before AMC was open here in Tingsboro. That was a seven or, I think it was a seven-year process in litigation to get that open. And in seven years, this is probably going to be federally legal. So we, you know, as much as we see that there's timelines in this court case, you never really know when court cases end. They can continue, there can be appeals, there can be different reasons to go through that litigation process. One prime example that we actually, before coming today and speaking with my legal counsel, we found out about a month ago, or two months ago, Juicy Nature's Remedy asked for deposition and the information from both the town, right? So they're going for the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, all the individuals involved on those boards that they're suing, as well as MJ's Market. MJ is being listed last, and they asked for pertinent correspondence and information between the two parties. And right now, they're supposed to be providing a traffic study that says there's a potential safety concern in that road, having competition across the street from one another. And this is kind of why we first came here, is when we sought to light that 500,000 square foot facility, and the Department of Transportation approved traffic study in there, saying completely opposite, we said, "How can there be safety concerns?" And this is why we came here, to kind of get you guys involved and say, "What can we do to try to get this resolved early on?" What we found out today is that the town didn't submit any of that information, and that Juicy is going to be requesting an extension early on to get more information to perform this traffic study, right? So here, as much as that timeline, and there was a timeline in there, as much as that timeline sends this ends in November, you know, they're already going to be looking for an extension, as we understand it. So, you know, and that's the thing about litigation, we never know when these litigations end, and with all these active projects going on, it seems, it seems to me, if we were to get all parties to sit down and have a civil conversation between one another, that, you know, as a small town should, you work things out, and you come to agreements that's amicable for everybody, and everybody moves forward, and everyone wins, especially the town with the amount of tax revenue that we're looking at for everybody.
Yeah, so on the timeline, and again, my name is Brian Foley, I'm the Vice President. So the timeline, you guys had asked what all changes we were looking for in the HCA, and really, we based it all on what was provided in Appendix A, which is basically a milestone and then a duration, a milestone and a duration. So, you know, apply for a special permit, and then get a special permit, then within 60 days later, file for a demolition permit, and then, and so on and so forth, 280 days of construction. So the problem is, item four in that list was, you know, get what you needed from the town, from the Planning Board, which is a special permit, which didn't happen. So it kind of stopped the whole flow. And I know last we met with you, we mentioned, you know, if we were successful in November, we might be able to have an opening sometime late next year, which I believe, success-based, that is possible, but what we've asked for in our response to you really just adds together those water flowed, waterfall dates, and you wind up with about 5/24/24 as the opening date. So that's like a worst case, all based on the premise that the lawsuit is behind us in November, which, as we found out today, as Heath just mentioned, and I'm, probably Adam, your counsel was probably provided this email as well, that now they intend to delay their response to the court, which is this traffic study. So it's just, you know, anything that breaks down between now and that special permit will cause us to slip that end date, basically. So what else is in there?
Yeah, so just to repeat for the residents, so in the timeline that MJ's Market gave us, they asked for us to change the Host Community Agreement, an end date of May 24th, 2024. And I'll just add, you know, when we put together Appendix A, that was to make sure that you had sufficient time to do it. We didn't think it would quite take that long, so it wasn't really a timeline for you.
Yeah.
It was hopefully, you know, giving you a chance in case, you know, things came up. We thought you could do it much quicker, but we wanted to give you a little bit of leeway. So that's why that timeframe was set up. We said 60 days to do something, and we don't really think it's going to take you 60 days, but, you know, since that was in the contract, we wanted to make sure that we gave you sufficient time.
We appreciate that, and we do believe, like, those first four steps, those were sufficient, you know? We sometimes came in a little ahead, and sometimes a week or two beyond, but obviously it kind of hit a wall when the litigation came.
Does anybody have any questions for them? Well, I mean, I do have one particular question, and then I'll, you know, I was pretty disappointed that we didn't get more financials, you know? Multiple members of the Board asked you for financials, you know?
We can't disclose that information.
What's that?
We can't disclose that information, especially during a lawsuit. We're a private company, and it's just not pertinent, it's not in anyone's best interest to show any financial information. We have a group of investors, we've, we've been vetted through the process, right? We've been approved, we have our license, we're two steps away, or three steps away from opening. One is get the special permit, two is build it and get CC approval. We're ready to do all of those things. We have been since 2018. It's never changed.
Well, my understanding is, you know, a lawyer gives you the suggestion, but it's up to you to decide if you can...
And I think we're making the right decision on this. Again, especially with the lawsuit pending, I believe this is the right decision. We, you know, we've, you know, I state again that we've been vetted, right? We've been through this process, and we're ready to open. We, our competition that we beat here in this last hearing, Nova Farms has already opened in Drakeett, Mass, right? If it wasn't for this lawsuit, we'd be open already. But we're, you know, until we can get past the special permit, and once we have that special permit, we'll be building as fast as possible. And I think that's what we were trying to drive home with the letter from our CPA, is to, you know, we have all of the groups ready, we're fine, we're fine, we're just waiting for this to go, and we're, yeah, we're trying to be as lean as possible, or not spend a lot of money, or throw money frivolously, but we are a small group, right? We're a small group of local investors. And I reiterate, we're not a multi-state operation with billions of dollars. We're trying to be as lean as we possibly can. That's always been our process and our efforts moving forward. It's why we don't own our buildings, to stay smaller and to have a better, closer group, if you will. We're trying to be that family-oriented company, and we're doing, we're not trying, we are successfully being that family-oriented company, and we're very good at it. We have, you know, friends, family, and very wealthy investors in the CPA. They felt the best we could do during this time is to give a letter from the CPA, that is CPA for the major four that we talked about in that letter, being more than willing and ready to build as soon as we can get past this lawsuit. But again, if it takes seven years, it could be federally legal in seven years.
Selectwoman Kalabokas, you have a question?
I do. I guess I have a question in a few comments, right?
Yeah.
And I want to start by saying, I don't want to seem unsympathetic in any way, shape, or form, because I understand what it's like to be caught up in a lawsuit, and how long that the court takes, and things of that nature. But I do want to say that it's our responsibility, that for us, we have to keep the town's best interests at the forefront, right?
Agreed.
And so, you know, if there is a lawsuit that is happening between you and Juicy, if there is something specific that maybe the town can do, we're happy to help, but we're not going to get in the middle between a lawsuit of you and Juicy.
So you are also being sued. The town is also being sued.
But you're coming here, asking for us to intervene between, for those interests, first of all. Second of all, I'm a little bit, I guess where it gets muddled is, I keep hearing that you believe that the basis of this lawsuit is traffic violations and a traffic study, which is one thing, and now you're saying that somewhere in this lawsuit also includes the financials, which you can't disclose?
No, that was just a request from your team.
Oh, so you can disclose the financials?
If we chose to.
The financials are not an issue in your lawsuit, or they are?
No, it's not, nothing in litigation.
Because your packet specifically says that you cannot disclose your financials because of the lawsuit.
Yeah, it tips our hand to the group that's suing us, right? They have, they're a billion-dollar company, so we're...
So is there more to the lawsuit besides...
Nope. It's really just come down to traffic and an assertion that the Planning Board didn't have the authority to issue the special permit.
So how would releasing your financials hurt the traffic study?
It wouldn't hurt the traffic study.
No, it wouldn't. So we've been delayed, like, you know, already a year.
It would hurt us personally, as a company. It would hurt my investors, it would hurt our group.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the lawsuit, you just personally?
That's right, yeah, that's right.
I just want to clarify, that's not what's in our packet.
Well, it says, I think it recommended by, by the attorneys, I don't know exactly what the wording was. It is because we choose not to, and again, it's because it's like opening up your playbook and going into a football game and letting the world see your playbook before you start that football game.
Well, there could be a football game, and there could be a soccer game, they could be two different things, right? So, you know, if you're telling us that it's a traffic violation, and you're telling us, you literally just said that your financials have nothing to do with the lawsuit, it's a personal thing, I understand it, and I, if that's what you're telling me, that is fine, but I want it to be clear here that it's not that you are refusing to give your financials to protect yourself from the lawsuit. It is not. It is because you, as a company, do not want to produce.
That's right, yeah, I guess that's right.
Which is fine, but they are different.
Yeah, we feel it would hurt us, it would hurt us in the lawsuit. It gives them more things to kind of poke at, I guess. Yeah?
Which is...
Thank you for the question.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear, so, okay. I'm gonna let other people give their comments, and then reserve maybe for questions after.
Did you have a question?
I didn't know whether Matt had something to add. Sorry.
I've got a quick question, just to clarify. The responses on the timeline for your current location versus the timeline for the proposed new location seem to be about the same, so I just wanted to clarify, is your, what is your specific request, given that, as of right now, the two timelines are looking the same based on your response?
Yeah, so the, so if we stay at the Yellow House, we have to get through the lawsuit. If we are allowed to move to the other location, I will have a two-to-three-month process of adapting the plans to the new site plan, working with the Planning Board, and obtaining a special permit there, but then it would waterfall again the same way, where I would, you know, look, be looking for a demo permit late this year. So there, there's similar timelines. Basically, I'm catching up to the same point where we stalled at, where we'd get a new HCA for a new location, or a modified one.
So is the, is your opinion, then, that there's more stability in going to a new location because you don't have the lawsuit, and then, because I'm, I'm just trying to understand what the ask is tonight, and then that could, the new location could get appealed by anybody, too?
Understood. It's, you know, we talked about this a lot, and the hope would be to actually go to the plaintiff, you know, if the Board was amenable to a different location, and ask them, you know, almost like we capitulate, you know? If we move, will you guys let us go do this thing? Get it in writing, hopefully, you know? Haven't even breached this with them yet officially, but that would be the idea. And I don't understand who else would really have a dog in the fight that wouldn't want us to be in that new location, which is, you know, it's, it's non-controversial, it's 500 feet from everywhere, of course, you have to go through the process, right? The planning process and whatnot, and all the experts get to chime in, whether it's public safety or conservation and all that, so you do have to go through that, there are risks, but absolutely willing to take those risks in order to proceed forward in a constructive manner.
Yeah, as it relates to that particular location, you know, when you went through the RFP process last time, I think you heard the Board talk about the particular intersection that you would be at, Locust and Middle Socks is one of the more dangerous intersections, it would take a lot of work to be able to figure out if that was the appropriate place. And I know you talked about having intersection or driveways on both Middle Socks and Locust, I don't, that kind of seems like that would be hard to, I don't think we're going to improve the traffic or the safety of that particular location by doing that, so I think there would be an awful lot of steps that we need to go over, especially for a facility like this, because there's a lot of people going in and out. It's not a business where you go in and stay there all day, it's an in-and-out business, so we would have to look at that very diligently. And you have, you've kind of given us the hint that you might want to do that, but it sounds like you want to stay at the other location, so we haven't really gone through and asked all the different departments, so I haven't really seen an official request from you to look at that. Any other questions?
Can I ask, and maybe Attorney Costa can help us on this one. Is there any way for the financials to be shared with us, not part of public record, given that we do have a lawsuit, or is there any mechanism by which that information can be shared with us with, and still addressing the concerns of MJ's Market?
Would you like me to address that?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So I think the answer is maybe. And I say maybe because I heard the justification given by the MJ's Market representatives for why it is that they don't want to share their financial information. As I understand it, it's sort of a twofold rationale. First is, they want to protect their investors, they deem that financial information private, and they don't want it disclosed publicly, maybe they don't want it disclosed at all outside of those investors, and those who are directly involved in the permitting and the eventual operation facility. And then there's a secondary, but a related rationale, and that is that they believe that by sharing those financials certainly in a public forum, such as with your Board of Selectmen, that they would be giving their opposing, the opposing party, opposing counsel in the litigation, an unfair advantage, because they'd be telling them how financially firm, how financially solid they are as an entity, and potentially giving the upper hand to the opponent, knowing that, who knows, they're running out of money, or their money is not as secure as their opponent might believe it could be. So in terms of, you know, how could this be structured so that those concerns can be addressed? I think I have some trouble addressing the first concern. If the investors don't want to release the financial information, that's their choice. Now, it's the town's choice to either allow or disallow an amendment of the HCA, but it's up to the corporate entity that wishes to contract it to town to either release that information or not. I think the second concern, the unfair advantage in the litigation, the disclosure of financial information in a public forum, I think that that can be addressed. I think that it has been addressed in circumstances like this, in which I've been involved, through joint defense agreements. Because remember, the town is a co-defendant with MJ's Market in the litigation, so you can enter into a joint defense agreement with your co-defendants, agreeing to share litigation strategy, financials, other information that would benefit from the attorney-client privilege, and that would not be visible to or subject to be shared publicly or with opposing counsel. So there are ways around that component of it, but that doesn't address the concerns the investors may have, just generally, that they don't want to release their financial information.
So, Mr. Chair, my question would be, based on what Mr. Costa just identified, would you be willing to share that information if we were to have a joint defense agreement? Or are you still not wanting to share that information because your investors don't want to disclose that information?
I would have to, I would say, personally, I wouldn't be opposed, but I would have to talk to my counsel and my group of investors and make sure it's okay, right? Is the information, Adam, I guess, is any of it put out to the public, right? Because my understanding is, when I provide documents to a town, that's all public information, right? So if I give you a piece of paper, anybody can go and read that piece of paper, if you will, right?
Will it be privileged if we get under an agreement?
So the answer is, the intent, obviously, is for it to be privileged and be protected. I will acknowledge, and this is a discussion that would have to happen with your counsel, I will acknowledge that when you're dealing with a public entity such as a municipality, because of the existence of the transparency laws in Massachusetts, public record law most particularly, most documents submitted to a municipal government are public records unless they fall within an exemption. And even in circumstances where they fall within an exemption, sometimes they're private for a period of time, but... And even in circumstances where they fall within an exemption, sometimes they're private for a period of time, but they become public thereafter. For example, when documents are shared in the context of litigation, they are often private and not shared publicly during the course of that litigation. But once the litigation is resolved and the purpose of the withholding disappears, so too does the privilege. And sometimes that's concerning to entities that their information, while it may not be shared immediately, will eventually, um, be in the public realm. So, it's not necessarily an indefinite protection.
Yeah, I think we would just need to caucus with our counsel. I mean, in the beginning, uh, when we went for the HCA the first time, we did provide our, a whole list of every investor. It was all in the packet, um, um, at length. And, and we, we did provide, you know, some financial information in there. I don't know if we did, went as far as bank statements, but that was a long time ago. Things have changed since then, so, um, um, your counsel makes good points, and we will certainly be tying off with ours tomorrow if there's some way we can give you what you need. What our intent was, was to, um, give this board the comfort that we do have the backing and the wherewithal to get this project moving. Um, I think I sent you, sent you a full set of plans, um, in the link. I mean, those plans are ready to go. Um, we're ready to pull a demo permit. I actually, uh, I know we said we're not willing to take on much more risk. I feel like we've already taken on a lot of risk to the town tune of two hundred K plus between, um, our legal battle, our, um, our two, two grips at the bat with the, uh, planning board, um, where we were asked to do a different, um, application. So, we had to pay for that twice and all the costs associated, and then the design build, the design, uh, for the build, um, incurred, you know, it's a, it's a hundred page, uh, you know, full-size print document for this site. Um, so that's about the risk we're willing to take at this point without a special permit. I will say, um, we are scheduling an abatement to be done in the next week or two, so we are gonna get that done, which is a prerequisite for a demolition permit, uh, make sure that there's no asbestos or lead, and that has to get filed with the state directly before, um, Inspector Welcom would, would issue a, a demolition permit. So, we will be doing that, um, but a- aside from that, um, we wouldn't be willing to take on any, we wouldn't pull a demolition permit and then raise the structure, um, without a special permit in hand, so hopefully that came across.
Well, just, just to make it clear though, we, we never asked you for investors' names. The only thing we ever asked you for is bank statements.
From investors, it stated, I believe.
What's that?
I believe it stated from investors, sorry. I thought it said bank statements from investors.
The letter that we sent, uh, asked, what's that?
I think it included both, like, asking for the investors' bank statements, but then also asking for just MJ's Market's bank statement.
Well, you asked for the land trust's, uh, bank statements and MJ's, right?
Yeah, so it's both, yeah.
So, so not individual investors. We don't want to know who's investing in your company. What we do want to know is you're a financially viable company. For us to hand over a host agreement for two years, we need to make sure, we need to do our due diligence. The residents would expect us to do our due diligence. It wouldn't just hand over something to you without knowing that you're able to do this. And with the information we have, we don't have that comfort level at this point.
So, that would be to, to do what? To extend the host community agreement? Sorry, I missed that.
Well, if, if we're gonna extend, if we're gonna go to the timeframe that you're talking about, May of twenty twenty-four, the host community agreement would have to be changed, right?
I believe.
I don't know if there were dates in the, the HCA. It was just durations and...
Pardon me?
I mean, I think you can derive a date, maybe, um...
It specifically says it's, you know, it's two years after you signed it. You signed it in April the twelfth.
Okay.
So, it's April the twelfth of next year, it expires.
Yeah, it would be a reset, yes.
Okay.
Would it be, um, agreeable if we gave you more detail on the, the group that's going to build the project? Rather than our, you know, particular finance, because we...
You're really breaking this into two, and you're making this more complex than I, than I believe it should be. What we're asking is to know if you are financially viable. You brought us, to us last time, that you have a, a, another group that's going to be from the land perspective or the building perspective.
Building property, correct.
Give us, give us every, give us what they have, give us what you have. Is, you're also gonna build a, a building, and then that's it. You also have a financials, uh, associated with this. How much are you gonna invest in it after the land? How much you could invest in your, in, in this, uh, facility once the, uh, the building is done?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, inventory, uh, point, all the point-of-sale systems, stuff like that. Absolutely, we could provide that.
You have to pay people, you have a lot of expenses. I mean, are, are you financially viable? I, I look back at your last agreement with us, and you are one of the only companies that didn't give us a full financials. You know, I don't know if it's because of this reason with the investors or whatever, uh, but, you know, now, we need that. The host community agreement, you're, you know, uh, you're asking to us, for us to extend it for two years. Once we extend it, you have it. We, we can't give it to anybody else. As, as mentioned earlier, we have to do our due diligence to make sure this is, you are the right company to do this. If you're asking for two years, we give out an initial host community agreement, it's two years. And I was expecting that you would come here with the information that, that we needed to be able to make the decision.
Well, yeah, I, I do think we can provide this, like, what you're asking for.
Sorry, can you say that again?
I, I do think we can provide, you know, more of what you're asking for, now that I understand a little more what's being asked. We, we'll have to caucus with our counsel, obviously, but, you know, it, it, it's still, I still come back to the, the issue of, we're, we're all in this litigation together, so when, when disclosure items are requested of the municipality, and then they're not provided, which is what just happened, um, now the plaintiff is asking for more time to do what they need to do. So, it's like, you could say, I'll give you two more years, but, you know, i- i- if I don't have a special permit, I can never open, I guess, is the takeaway. So, I, it's, I don't know how to solve it.
I'm, I'm sorry, just what I keep coming back to is, you keep saying, I, I guess there's two separate parts. I'll start with the first, and then we'll go to the second one. The first one you keep saying is that the town did not disclose things in a timely manner to you, and that is why you are in the position that you're in. This is not what we're...
No, we can't contend that. We, we know what we, we were told today.
Okay, Slakwemukalobokus has the floor, please.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Just the second question I have is I, um, so I'm hearing that, you know, I guess my question is, do you have a contingency plan for what happens if, let's say, hypothetical scenario, we decide that you can move to this other location, and the lawsuit still continues?
I think, oh, sorry.
What is, what is the contingency plan? Can you still continue to fight the lawsuit, and you will take more of a risk to build on this new location? What, what, what is your thoughts for i- in the case that happens?
So, so in that theoretical pretense of, let's say you say, yes, we can move, right? Let's start with that. Okay, you got, great, you guys can move. I think that next step would be to contact Juicy directly and say, you guys are gonna litigate if we choose to move down the road. And have them sign off saying that they wouldn't.
But what if they say yes? Are we in the same kind of boat? We went through all of this to be in the same kind of boat?
Maybe so.
Yeah, and, and, and that's why that first question I ask is, is it possible for the town to facilitate if we're sitting at a table together? Because the, the only common thing is the town between us and nature's remedy, right? So, is it possible, and it's in the best interest for the town, for both of us to be open? It's actually in their best interest for both of us to be open. When you look statistically at competitors, having two competitors next to each other is usually a good thing, right? So, and I don't know if that's feasibly possible to happen, um, you know, we're just looking for resolve, right?
Yeah, I, I could, Mr. Chair, sorry. I mean, we, we have tried reaching out to them, you know, through, you know, counsel ourselves directly, and we, I don't think I've had any more luck really than you have. We've tried a few of those amicable routes.
Excuse me.
You know, my impression, um, is that they're looking to, you know, see this through to resolution. Um, you know, I think, as we all know, that that's probably the longest route, and they're making, as you've, I think, noted in your defense, they're making money hand over fist right now, so. You know, there are situations, I think, you know, with local individuals, maybe two neighbors and the town in a lawsuit, where we might have a little bit more flexibility to be a neutral third party or an arbitrator or something, but we don't really have any more leverage over Juicy than you do, unfortunately. I did have one other question, but, okay. We weren't able to, um, really verify or get confirmation yet on the ability to open. Um, well, there's an appeal pending, and I know you had mentioned that there was some provision that you thought would not let you open if you had an appeal on your special permit. I didn't know if the CCC would be willing, or the person who gave you per, your provisional would be able to give some more insight on that. Um, there was nothing initially we were able to find in the regs or that they were able to give us that said you can't open.
Yeah, it's a condition of a final license to submit a special, filed special permit with the, with the county stamp, you know, Middle Socks County Lowell Registered Deed Stamp, uh, or they won't, they won't, they won't put you for vote for final license.
Did someone say that to you verbally, or is it written somewhere that you can send to us?
Yeah, sure. It's a, there's a, it's a checklist of, of items that are required. You know, I, I'd even be willing to submit to you the, the full packet we had to submit, uh, to open our Grafton store, you know? And that, that would be one of the details in there. And, you know, it's basically the, the first one that goes through the pile at the CCC, just, did they, did they put everything in here? You know, yes, then it goes to the next people. No, it, it gets kicked back. So, that's one of, there's not a huge number of items in that list, you know? Certificate of Occupancy, stamped special permit, um, and then a lot of, uh, business-related things like standard operating procedures, hiring practices, you know, diversity, inclusion, that kind of stuff, a lot of, what I would say is boilerplate stuff. But then you do need a couple key documents, um, special permit being one of those. What was, what, what did you mention before, Matt? Because I had something to add, but, like, what was the first, uh, thing that you asked me two seconds ago?
Shannon, you, you know, I can't remember.
What I have down is that you were commenting on how the lawsuit isn't quite like two residential neighbors being in a lawsuit, and you would be able to solicit a discussion amongst that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, um...
So, yeah, you, we can't get the special permit, right? When there's litigation under that special permit, you're not allowed to release it, right? So, we could never get that stamp of approval from the county? I guess that's...
Yeah.
And then, so because we wouldn't have that stamp from the county, the CCC, we haven't met all the criteria of their requirements. So, they wouldn't give us that final license, right? So, we have a provisional license now. I guess the next stage is license complete and then final, or final license and license complete. So, we wouldn't be able to get to that final license piece without that special permit.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to, yeah, just show me where, you know, where it is, or what it is, just to try and verify it, and we're able to figure that out.
Where that is, yeah.
Yeah. And then it's looking like construction costs, which would fall on our real estate investor, and startup costs, which would fall on MJ's and our ability to cover those. Does that sound about right, or?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So, in, in addition to that, the financials relating to construction costs and our real estate development group's ability to cover those, and then the startup costs, which would fall on MJ's and our ability to get those, to fund those.
Right.
Is that pretty much it?
Specifically, we asked you, and the way it's, you know, the way our questions are, financials specific to MJ's market, market, project in Tingsborough, bank statements for the last three months. So, that would include Real Estate Investment Group and MJ's Market, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Because we want to make sure that the money is there, and it's specific, and you need to show us that it's specifically set aside for Tingsborough. That was a core requirement that we did in the last RFP, and we want to make sure that it's there. So, last three, last three months' bank statements is key to show that you're financially viable, and you have the money. You can talk about everything else, but if you don't have the money, uh, it's not gonna happen.
Well, sure, but, you know, a, a lot of the ways business run is, they don't sit on a, a, a pile of cash waiting for something that they're gonna need to do in a year and a half. So, um, you know, in the past, we've provided to this, this board, you know, letters of credit from, uh, construction companies, from real estate development companies, um, you know? And if you're looking for, you know, solvency bank statements, like, is it agreeable that, you know, who's extending us this credit would provide these statements? Uh, would that be a- agreeable? You know, this, this may, may very well not come out of the MJ's Market current Grafton Operations GFA bank statement. In fact, it definitely would not. So, we could provide you those, but that doesn't really show that it's earmarked for, for hiring people that I don't have to hire for a year or more. I just, it, it seems like, you know, apples and oranges, maybe. I want to make sure I'm giving you something relevant to this specific project.
Well, if you have lines of credit, whatever you have financially to show. I mean, you, you keep going more and more and more layers. Uh, you need to show us that you're financially viable. I have not done that yet.
I get you. I think that first step, excuse me, sorry, will be to, uh, to get a joint defense agreement in place, uh, with your attorneys and ours, right? We'll start with that, and we'll have our attorneys draft something up, and obviously, we'll see the viability of that protection, um, to it. And I think that's certainly the first steps, right? And, um, and then hopefully we can provide, provide you a lot of information. I don't, you know, I like to say, come down and we'll just show them to you, but I don't think we can do that either.
But, but that is an invitation, by the way.
You've been through the, you've been through the process twice. We, we've, we've been very consistent in what we've asked for, right?
Yeah.
We've asked for financial viability, we've asked for bank statements, and that's what we're, we're asking you again.
Yeah, um, okay. We'll provide as much financial viability as we can, once we get the agreement signed. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you very much for your time again.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam.
Yes, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, Adam. So, so, I guess we're in a, are we waiting for financial statements now? I guess, um, the key thing, Matt, is that we need to have them get this to us as soon as we can. I don't want to go have another, this is, we've already gone through two hearings.
Right.
Pretty much, pretty clear what we're asking for. And, you know, just make sure it's very clear of what exactly we need. Uh, touch base with me once they, uh, give us the information, send it to the board, uh, and we gotta make sure that we have everything that we need to make the decision.
Do you want to take a vote tonight to authorize Town Council to sign the joint defense agreement to allow them to share those documents with us in executive session? I think it'd be appropriate, just...
Sure.
He might ask, you know, two or three days from now when he has the draft, do I have the authority to sign it? I'd feel better if you voted tonight, just so we can keep the process moving and we can get the documents before the next meeting.
We should probably have the document be approved or drafted by Town Council.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. We should have a motion to do that.
Okay.
And Matt could, Matt could do it, and you could...
Uh, you know, I'm looking for a motion to authorize Town Council to draft the joint defense agreement, um, and authorize him to execute, um, the agreement. I'd say upon review by the chair and the town administrator. It should be fine.
And Town Council, again.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also oppose abstaining. That passes four zero zero.
Can I ask one other question relative to this? It sounded like, um, they were unclear as to, um, what exactly needed to be changed within what they were asking for in the agreement. Do we still have a gray area there? Because I, I think, you know, before we can deliberate, let's assume that we get all of the, the, um, information that we need and can make an informed decision, and we s- we decide to consider changing whatever needs to be changed. I don't think we're on the same page as to what would need to be changed, and if we're not on the same page as to what needs to be changed, I don't feel comfortable saying, yeah, I could agree with that or not agree with that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think I can clarify.
Go ahead, Matt.
So, um, there's really two deadlines in the HCA. There's one, our sort of fail-safe is the two-year deadline. They don't dispute that, and that's what Chairman Cohen reminded them of tonight. Um, in addition to the two-year drop-dead timeline, we have our milestone timeline in there. The issue is, almost all of the dates are predicated on days from completion after receiving... The issue is almost all of the dates are predicated on days from completion after receiving the special permit. So they're alleging that none of our timelines, apart from the two-year, have even been triggered yet because they don't have the special permit free and clear. So if we clarified that that timeframe was special permit free of appeals, we wouldn't have to change the rest of their timeline. We might have to change the end date and they finally acknowledged that tonight. We would have to change the end date, but the whole rest of the timeline for their milestones doesn't need to change if we're willing to concede that word um, without appeals. If we were to add that language in and then the deadline, those would be the only two dates we'd have to change.
And, and, you know, it, it's as clear as could be in the host community agreement, you know? We, we both signed this. It's signed April the 12th, 2021. It's a two-year timeframe. And then as a subsection of that, we wanted to make sure that they were moving along. So we didn't have to get close to the two years and then say, well, okay, now we know you can't do it. So we tried to go through steps to make sure that they were moving along and they were keeping us updated. And we asked them to send us an email stating that they weren't there. So I, you know, it, it's as clear as can be in the host community agreement. This is a two-year agreement and expires April 12th, 2023, 2023. But, you know, we need to make sure that it's clear. Uh, it seemed to be pretty clear they were asking, uh, to move that to May of twenty twenty four. Twenty four. So that was, that was the request. But we can make sure it's totally clear to them, uh, next time they come in. Yeah. Uh, any other questions? Okay, approved Verizon Cable License Renewal, Mr. Town Administrator.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rony, did you want to come up for this?
Oh, he, he wanted you to cover it.
Okay.
You're on the hook, Matt.
All right. Well, we've attached a, a redlined version, which is ready to, um, for the board to sign a cleaned up version. Nothing has changed from the last meeting. Uh, you recall, Rony gave a brief overview at the last meeting, but essentially we're going to be continuing the three percent, uh, surcharge that we currently have. Um, however, we do have an escalator closet. If we were to negotiate a higher amount from Comcast, they would honor that. So really a discussion could be made, uh, at that time on whether we want to increase, you know, whether it be three and a half or four and a half or five, or whether we just stick to the three percent. But it's nice to know the option is available and we've slightly increased the amount of capital that they're willing to provide. They're going to be going to 10,000 a year, I believe, up from 7,500 per year. Those are really only the main changes. They made some clarifications to the map, which is basically almost the entirety of, of Tingsborough essentially. Other than that, um, nothing really to report unless the board asks questions.
Any questions, uh, on this? Seeing none, kind of a motion please.
I don't want to draft it, but a motion that the board approves the amended agreement as provided by Attorney Hewig from KP Law and approved by Verizon Council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that passes four zero zero. Uh, 93 Kendall Road, request for conditional waiver and right of first refusal. Mr. Nikosia.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks for having me this evening. So I know you're familiar with the project at 93 Kendall Road, but for the benefit of the, uh, two or three people that might be watching at home this evening, um, I'll color that, uh, a little bit. Um, so 93 Kendall Road is owned by Brock's Industries. It's about a 60 acre parcel that sits behind the, uh, the town highway department. And my clients, uh, SDG Development and Marcus Partners, who are our national, you know, warehouse, and this is not a storage facility, but a warehouse building, uh, outfit, um, have been working diligently in the, in the pre-filing planning stages uh, to put, uh, close to 500,000 square feet of warehouse space, uh, back on that parcel. And, um, in addition to the substantial real estate tax revenue that that would engender for the town and great new, you know, sort of passive economic development, it also envisions, um, a new, uh, roadway that would have multiple benefits to, uh, the town, uh, in terms of the highway department's access to their site, my client's, uh, property development, as well as the park and ride. Uh, it also allows for expansion of the park and ride as well. It allows for the highway department to maximize highest and best use of their parcel. It, it opens up a lot of space that's currently either cut off by the roadway or used by the roadway. So there's a lot of ancillary benefits there as well. And as you know, there's a lot of behind the scenes planning with Mass DOT, you know, analyzing that conjoined roadway. And, and so now, uh, we've gotten to a point where I think we've, everybody's sort of landed on conceptual agreement um, as to striking the balances of all of those parties and achieving a roadway situation that actually makes sense. Um, and our state filings are moving forward. Um, so now they're on the precipice, my clients of, uh, local permitting efforts, you know, with the planning board and all of the other boards that we'll have to go in front of. But before we do that, this property has a unique characteristic. It is, uh, currently taxed classified as chapter 61B. That is a unique tax classification that allows property owners to sort of, uh, depress the tax bill uh, during a time period where the property is not in highest and best use. And then when there is a change of use, an actual change of use, um, there's a requirement for, um, the property owner to pay up at that time and pay all the rollback taxes moving forward. So, um, another unique aspect of chapter 61B is that there is a right of first refusal um, in favor of the town, as well as the state, um, to potentially purchase the property when confronted by an unconditional bona fide, uh, purchase agreement with another party. So what chapter 61B provides is that, um, once that agreement is in place, um, and here, that's not the case. We do have an agreement, but there are conditions to it, including permitting approvals. So it's not technically a bona fide offer, I mean, purchase agreement yet to trigger our ability to even look to address the right of first refusal. But that will be coming in the near future. So before they invest the hundreds of thousands of dollars and likely millions of dollars, uh, even in the soft costs of this development, they want to have a comfort level from at least the town's vantage point that it's not their intent to want to exercise their right of first refusal and buy this property all from underneath them and prevent this development. Now, um, again, um, we're looking for sort of a, an intent vote or a conceptual vote, you know, so that we have some comfort in moving forward. Uh, the reality is that when the, uh, purchase and sale agreement becomes unconditional, I will have to send a formal, Sellers Council will have to send a formal notification to Board of Selectmen, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Board of Assessors.
That's all?
As well as this, no, uh, as well as the state, state foresters office in Boston, uh, which triggers 120 day time period for someone to exercise the right of first refusal. Now, there are other submittal requirements and things of that nature. More often than not, when I've gone through this process in the past, the municipality and the state make decisions pretty quickly on those. They don't just let it sit around for 120 days and take no action or, um, you know, unreasonably delay the exercise of their rights because they know that, you know, there are other things going on. So, um, we're basically looking for a conditional vote from the board saying that, you know, if we held that vote tonight and it was the official 61B process, you know, the Board of Selectmen is in favor of, of voting to waive the right of first refusal uh, so that we have some comfort level that it isn't on the radar. Now, the reasons to waive the right of first refusal are a lot of the things that I said in the very beginning. This is smart, well-planned, sought-after economic development for this town. It's in a great geographic location, right near the highway exits. It results in lots of municipal infrastructure improvements, both in terms of roadway, on the main roadway, accessway. It results in significant improvements to the park and ride, the state's land, to the town's land and the highway department. And it's going to engender a lot of tax revenue. The other side of it is the town matches a market rate, uh, purchase, development purchase price to have more, you know, bird watching and trail land in town. And the reality is that as we, as we hearken back to the last 50 years in this town, you know, we've made a lot of purchases with open space money under the CPC. Um, and a lot of times those were to avoid dense residential developments, that we don't want to impact, you know, negatively impact services in town. Or they were strategic, uh, lands that had really, uh, passive or active recreation uses for the town. Um, and those were the basis for that. It is very rare for our community to, uh, thwart, uh, an economic development opportunity in favor of keeping open space. Uh, because it's really not consistent with our zoning planning objectives under any of the planning documents we've been drafting since oh four or forward, of which some of the people at these tables were involved in. So, um, I'm here looking for some form of a conceptual vote, knowing that we, it's not 100% guaranteed. We're going to have to go through the formal process and it might be a different board at the time. And we understand that there's risk, uh, but nonetheless, we'd like some comfort level before we start writing these types of checks.
Any questions for Attorney Nikosia? Mr. Chad, please. Yes.
Uh, just curious on the, you know, say there is the intent, uh, vote is in favor of, uh, leaving the right of first refusal. What is a timeline on a project like this, just conceptually?
To shovel in the dirt or permitting or occupancy or?
Let's do shovel in the dirt and then do occupancy.
I, you know, occupancy is a very difficult, uh, thing because they build these places on spec and then they go out and get their tenants to come in. So that is a difficult thing. I would say, um, that we have at least a year left of permitting, uh, to go through. Uh, through MIPA, uh, through all of the local, uh, planning processes. I mean, we've, we've probably spent the better part of eight months, nine months, 10 months, maybe even a year so far just navigating the conjoined access with Mass DOT and their engineering team. What we, what we try to do on projects like this, because it's like taking an elephant for a walk, you know, a project of this magnitude in a, in a town of this size. So the, the planning phase, we try to do so much pre-filing to cut down the peer review engineer, engineering, the public hearing process. Uh, there are so many considerations to be, you know, ferreted out in these things that we try to do it all before we get in here. But I would say probably a year, um, is my guess. Uh, actual construction completion, you know, at least a year after that, I would think, you know? And I don't want to, you know, I don't want, this is not intended at all to box in the developers because they may, they may be home right now, watching online, throwing things at their computer screen because I'm misquoting what the timeline's going to be. So these are, these are my best guestimates with some of the discussions that we've had in our multi-group, uh, planning sessions. Now, the one other thing I wanted to mention, Selectmen, uh, town planner, town administrator have been, the engineers for the town have all been actively involved in these, these planning discussions and maturation's of the plan and they have been outstanding and very helpful. Um, the design team, and it's a large design team, and even Mass DOT team, um, have all been very complimentary of, uh, of that. So, you know, I want people to know that, you know, it's a great opportunity for the town and the town is responding to it.
That's good.
Yeah, I was involved in those discussions of Mass DOT and they moved very quickly and we, you know, honestly, we're all surprised. We got, we moved things along, had quick meetings, uh, you know, got, and it sounds like they're, they're in agreement now of what this needs to be. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we were building the sewer line up, Middlesex.
I forgot to mention that, yeah.
Brock's property. Brock's property decided they were going to be a part of that and that was actually the last thing that we needed to be able to move forward with the sewer project. So they, they agreed to be a part of that.
You've agreed to extend those lines. That's correct. That's part of this development.
Man, I'm all for waiving the right of first refusal. We've talked about economic development. We built the sewer line, uh, you know.
These are the projects we wanted to get, you know?
It's one of the best parcels, uh, for economic development. So I'm definitely in favor of it. I'll open up to the board though.
Matt, um, you know, there's a recommendation there that we let, uh, some of the other boards and committees, because I, I haven't seen whether any of them have weighed in on that. Um, I know I would feel better about that, just to let the other boards, uh, and committees to, to weigh in uh, in case there's anything that we missed, rather than just jumping into this. But, um, is that correct that there really hasn't been any discussion with, you know, any of the other groups on?
No, there, well, I shouldn't say that. There, and Matt will attest to this. I mean, we've had the town planner and the town engineer, you know, involved every step of the way. In our initial conceptual meetings, uh, which Ron had attended, we had every department in town involved in those processes. I have yet to hear an objection. I've heard constructive recommendations in terms of like change this, do that. We want to see this, you know, from our perspective. Uh, but I haven't heard a single, single word of opposition. Now, again, the, the departmental comment is going, has to happen as we go through the formal process because I have to send it to all of these boards anyways. So that opportunity still exists as we move forward. And it's a very narrow examination at this point. It's, it's whether the town should own the land, rather than any site planning considerations or any of the nitty gritty that goes with site planning development type commentary. So, um, I think the board, the department's input on whether the town should own the land is, is fairly limited. I, um, look at, I mean, this, I'm not intending at all to rush the board because this project is, will take a while. You know, if the board felt that before they can even give a conceptual vote, they want to put it out to town department comment, I'm certainly not going to oppose that. I would just ask that it, uh, happened sooner than later so that we can sort of check the box uh, as we move on to our full submittable planning documents as we go forward. But I, you know, that's whatever you guys decide.
And I agree with Mr. Nikosia just said too, is that we've had multiple meetings with multiple departments, uh, you know, about the site. Made, you know, it was, it was a lot of give and take and it was, it was a very good discussion. And, uh, you know, in the end, I think, you know, whether the homeland or not, really isn't a board, you know, those different board uh, to make that decision is really for the Board of Selectmen.
I mean, I think we've seen this exact picture a few times now, right?
We have.
At this point. Um, obviously up for discussion, but myself personally, I have no hesitation to waive the right of first refusal or at least give the intent, say that we have the intent to do so when the time becomes proper. So obviously we can vote, but I think that it's something we've gone through quite a few times now.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just as a point of clarification, yes, we've seen it, um, quite a few times and, and I'm, I, I think it's a great project. Um, I just think relative to right of first refusal, we haven't really discussed that as a board. And it's one of those things, I don't know the departments, I'm overly concerned about it, but is CPC and just, just getting feedback from those folks to see, yes, it is our discussion. I mean, it's our decision, but I think that, um, we want to, we, we do want to get feedback from people on those types of things.
Well, I think what all we're saying is that we support that this project should move forward. And if it's going to move forward, we're not going to step in and say, just kidding, we would like to purchase this land. That's really all we're, we're, we're saying here. So if, if we're, if we're going to go through and we're going to support the project, then it, it seems like the logical next step to waive the right of first refusal because all we're saying is we're intending not to step in the middle.
And purchase the property.
And purchase, specifically purchase the property. If something happens and it goes wrong and we want to put, you know, different, you know, barricades in the way we can, but.
Totally with you.
Yeah.
However, we haven't had the discussion around us having the right of first refusal. And I don't, I personally don't think that we should, um, you know, I think we should waive our right. However, I don't have feedback from other people who may feel differently. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, I, I, I put.
Mr. Chair, I, you know, I, I, I put both of those options in there because the, sort of the normal process in this situation, you know, I know I wrote boards and committees, it would specifically be conservation and the CPC, conservation if they wanted and then CPC if they would work with you to recommend funding of it. Um, but to Selectman Calbocas' point, you know, and, and to your point, this has been discussed for, you know, the better part of several years now from the sewer discussions and whether they're a part of that or not and can we afford the entire project for economic development. So, you know, I feel ninety-nine percent sure that those, you know, conservation and CPC aren't gonna change their mind and like really advocate for purchasing it. But, um, the normal process would be to sort of ask their opinion first, even if it was an informal vote. You know, so I would understand if you wanna go that route, but, um, you know, given the very small likelihood, I don't think it'd be inappropriate to just take the vote tonight either. I think either way, you're gonna end up with the same result, but that's why sort of both options are in there. If this was a random piece of property that someone had put in chapter sixty-one to, you know, preserve, uh, you know, a small ten acre somewhere, a forest, we don't really know if it connects to other conservation land or not, et cetera. Normally you would seek board input first.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
Could you put the picture of it back up?
Sure.
Mr. Hanson. So, if I were a resident and I wanted to take a walk in nature, I wouldn't go there.
No, I don't recommend it.
Not to disparage the property, it's near the highway, which probably is...
It's topographically very challenging too.
Yeah, it's just not an exciting thing, um, to buy for open land. For open space is my opinion, right? So, um, I would, I would, uh, I would support a, an intent, and the word is intent.
Yeah, it's non-binding.
Waive the right of refusal.
And again, when you do go through the, the formal process, you will be soliciting comments. I will, it's a requirement that I send it to them. So, you will avail yourself of that process and it will be there. Um, this is just more of a, kind of a putting our finger in the wind to let us know that nobody's like pining to buy this as open space for the town.
Not for open space.
From the only board that has the authority to do it.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna walk around there. I don't think anybody in their right mind would wanna walk around there. Especially it's jaggedy, it's maybe there's some granite that has to be removed and, well, dangerous for people to walk on.
You bury the roadkill there, it's...
So, yeah, I was just on that, Mr. Chair.
So, I've heard three people, um, definitely feel, I believe that we should vote on it tonight. Uh, but Selectman Eldridge, is there's anything else you wanna add or?
No, I mean, it, it's fine. It's, it's semantics, right? Because it's, it's non-binding, it's intent. My concern was, as Matt had indicated earlier, that typically we would ask the other boards, um, on those types of things. I'm fine, you know, waiving it now, just our intent to waive it. Um, but it's just one of those things, I don't, I don't want people to look at the board as just doing things in a vacuum and that we do solicit feedback from other groups. And I know other people have been involved in this. So, I mean, I'm fine moving forward, um, with an intent to waive, it's non-binding. And then, you know, when there is a bona fide offer, we'll go through this process again. But if, if that's what, um...
And that's the risk we take on.
Yep, absolutely. And if it helps, uh, the developer to continue on with this and, and it shows our desire that we view this project to be, um, very beneficial to the town, then I'm fine with that.
Yeah, just, I mean, it definitely hasn't been in a vacuum. This has been, a- as stated, we've seen the diagram multiple times, uh, you know, in, in the Board of Selectmen meetings and other meetings, uh, you know, we've gone through, the sewer project was, I think it was when I first started, five or six years ago when, uh, this was, this was, you know, first discussed. So, uh, you know, if the CPC had any chance of, of wanting to purchase this, which I've never heard they did, uh, I think that's really the only board would have something, a thing to say, saying like, you know, I just don't think that, you know.
I don't believe it's on their identified list of parcels in their...
Yeah.
Planning documents.
So, I'm good with doing this, um, you know, if, we can also send out, uh, feedback to the boards and committees, uh, you know, post haste, just to see if there is anything that we haven't seen before.
Sure.
And then that way, everybody is aware, aware of it.
No objection.
We're good for motion?
Yes.
Go for it.
I move that the boards and, I move that the board vote its intent to waive its right of first refusal on ninety-three Kendall Road, subject to a final vote to waive our ROFR when the town receives a bona fide offer to purchase its receipt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. That passes for Zerzer.
Always a pleasure. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon.
A year from now.
Kendall Road. Davis Road Property, Ann. I've known Ann for many years. I was just at the farm today picking up my vegetables. I've been a part of, uh, that program for many years on and off. And I, uh, welcome you to, uh, the Select Board meeting, Ann.
And I do, I pulled a map up too, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ann Gagnon from Mass Department of Fish and Game. And I own the, um, a budding parcel to the east, I guess it would be, um, with my husband, Mike Gagnon. That's part of Bear.
Can I just, to be clear, so everybody sees this, the diagram she's handed out was in orange is the property that the town owns right now.
Correct.
Uh, and to the right of that is the property that Ann, that, if there's a right of that, then what's in red is, is what you want.
Right, and the, uh, as you can see from the figure that I just handed out, uh, orange is Tingsborough's Assessor's Parcel Three Dash Twelve, which is a landlocked, town-owned piece of land that's twenty-three acres. I'm assuming that the town acquired this property many years ago for failure to pay taxes or something like that.
That's what I've heard also.
But there's no legal way to access it because Bear Hill Farm owns the frontage in front of it. And surrounding the back portion is MIT's Haystack Observatory. So, uh, as I mentioned, I work for the Mass Department of Fish and Game. We buy land to, um, uh, protect it for wildlife habitat and provide open space so people can hunt and fish and birdwatch, et cetera. And so, um...
So, so this property would be good for bird watching and, and trail walking, un- un- unlike the previous one.
Right.
Uh, and I may add, there's a lot of people that, uh, that are on that property. There are currently trails, uh, a lot of bikers go through there, a lot of hikers and, and, uh...
Right. So, right now, uh, this twenty-three acres that's town-owned is, um, I would say, underutilized uh, because there is no place to legally park on Davis Road. There's, um, no way to legally access it without crossing over someone else's property, et cetera. So, my proposal, and again, this is potential, but, um, Fish and, Fish and Wildlife, um, has a board that votes which parcels to, um, fund acquisition of twice a year. So, we typically meet January, February timeframe and then we typically meet in the fall, so September, October timeframe. So, I have a, um, meeting coming up September twentieth, um, to go over the projects that the Northeast District is presenting to this lands committee board. We have five different districts. Um, we have meetings for all the different districts, as I said, twice a year. And then this land committee ranks all the projects against each other until the money runs out, so to speak. Um, and then decides which projects to move forward on. So, um, the reason I'm here before you this evening is because I'm getting together my agenda for this upcoming meeting in September. And, um, the proposal would be for Bear Hill Farm to donate to the Mass Department of Fish and Game, the area in red. And again, this has not been finalized, so this is just in theory. But if this was to come to fruition, then that would grant, um, a tiny little parking area for two or three cars, uh, on Davis Road. And then, uh, potentially a strip of land that would act as a trail for access to this back portion, uh, which would be this town-owned parcel. So, um, the proposal is to, uh, pay the town up to the assessed value. Um, we pay appraised value. So, the state needs to ensure that we don't, um, do sweetheart deals or waste taxpayers' money. So, when we, um, go to acquire a parcel, we have, uh, an independent appraiser appraise it. And so, that's why I say up to that, that amount of money. Um, because number one, um, we can't overpay. And number two, we need a number to budget, right? So, we know how much we have left to acquire other projects. So, um, if the board, uh, was amenable to selling for conservation purposes to the state, then, um, I would bring this project before my lands committee in September. They would vote, um, probably by the middle of October. We would know whether this project ranked high enough. Um, in the meantime, we would hopefully, um, finalize whether this exact configuration was going to be gifted to, um, the Mass Department of Fish and Game for access to this town-owned parcel. And, um, if the lands committee ranks it high enough, then the state would then ask the town to, uh, sign an option. And then the state would pay the money for a title exam and for the appraisal. And hopefully, we could, um, finish up the deal and pay the town within a few months. So, certainly by spring.
So, uh, you know, I'm very familiar with this piece of land and, and, uh, MIT and that whole area, uh, up there. Uh, and I can't say if anybody thinks in the future that this might be something for economic development. Let me just add that where the orange and the red meet, uh, which is to Davis Road, there's a very small path that you can actually cross there. Uh, and you actually have to cross a little stream. Beyond that, it is fully flooded, uh, swampland, uh, very, very thick, very wide swampland on, on both sides. So, this really is only something that can be used, I feel, for, uh, I don't wanna repeat, uh, Attorney Nicosia's, uh, bird watching and, uh, trail walking thing, but, uh, definitely for conservation. Um, I asked Matt before this meeting, I, I kinda thought this was already conserved, uh, property, but I guess it's under the Board of Selectmen right now. Uh, I'm not sure if we need to go to town meeting, uh, if we were to move forward with this. Uh, and the other thing is, um, just so everybody knows, one of our goals this year is to create a land trust. And I always looked at this property and any other prop, small property like this that is, you know, landlocked, no other use for, uh, I thought it would be a good candidate, uh, for the land trust because the land trust will also conserve this property, uh, it, as another option. So, uh, that is another thing that we could do, um, to make sure that this is conserved, uh, you know, this is conserved forever, uh, very similar to what you're doing. So, that, those are kind of the two options here that, that I, that I think we have. And Matt, I don't believe we've, you know, Ann wanted to, to come in front of us and talk to us today. I, I don't think we've, I don't know, have we had enough time to do, do diligence on this? Uh, or is there more work for us that we need to do on this?
So, I think my, uh, recommendation in the packet would be, um, to, if the board's amenable, solicit, oop, did I not get it in there, sort of like we did with the last one, solicit input from other town boards and committees. It's always the first thing we do before, um, we'd officially make a recommendation to town meeting to surplus the property. Um, but certainly wanted to come to you first before doing that. So, if the board is amenable either to transferring this to the land trust, which would preserve it, because right now technically you could sell it for, you know, Amazon, you know, we know they're not coming here. Um, if you put it in towards a land trust or were to sell it to, uh, the state, uh, we would have to go through that process of soliciting comments from the other boards and departments. So, you know, with your blessing this evening, we'll start that process today. Um, you know, you and I have talked briefly about what makes the most sense for the property and, um, you know, Ann, maybe you could opine on this a bit more about sort of the benefits of selling this to Mass Fish and Wildlife versus transferring it to our Conservation Commission or transferring it to an independent land trust, which, which is even one more step removed from the town to really, really preserve it. Why should the town sell it to Fish and Wildlife versus hold on to it for our own conservation purposes?
Yeah, well, for obvious, well, one obvious reason is, uh, if you sold it to the State Department of Fish and Game, you would get up to fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars for the town. So, I mean, I personally think that that's a chunk of change, but, um, maybe you disagree. Um, the land would be just as protected if owned and controlled by the Mass Department of Fish and Game. Um, I would say more so than if it was owned by a land trust because a land trust can sell their land whenever they want for development in order to purchase another piece of land, unless it has a conservation restriction on it, for instance. Whereas, uh, the Mass Department of Fish and Game never sells their land for development. Once we own it, it's considered Article ninety-seven, um, protected property and it would take, uh, both the House and the Senate, um, legislature to, you know, for us to sell it. And we've, as far as I know, we've never done that before. So, it would be fully protected, would be fully open to the public if, you know, we were successful in getting this portion of Bear Hill Farm transferred as well. Yeah, so I, I don't see any downside to selling it to Fish and Game as opposed to donating it to a land trust or having the Conservation Commission, um, control it. Um, if it's sold to the Mass Department of Fish and Game, it would be our responsibility for maintaining it. So, you, you wouldn't have to, the, the Tingsborough Conservation Commission wouldn't have to expend any monies to make sure that it was being taken care of.
Anybody else have any questions for Ann?
Mr. Chair, just a question.
Yes.
If it, if the property is, um, sold, as you suggested, to the, uh, as you said, Fish and Wildlife, um, is, just by chance, if somebody gets hurt on that property, that all that liability goes to the state versus?
Correct. You, you would no longer, the town of Tingsborough would no longer own it, so, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's one of my questions I wanted to...
Any other questions?
And, and I should mention that, um, it's my understanding that there's a state law that says that if you allow the public onto your property and you don't charge, um, a fee for that privilege, um, and you, and you don't have some, you know, open pick that people could fall into or, you know, some, uh, crazy, um, issue like that, uh, that it's, uh, unlikely that anyone will be successful in suing you, so...
Yeah, the, uh, the law to make sure that a lot of land stayed open, uh, that was an issue at one point. So, uh, the state very clearly, uh, made sure that if, as long as you're not charging for it, if you get hurt, um, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be successful in suing, in suing the, the landowner.
Yeah.
Uh, and that allows the landowners to more readily open up their, their land to the public.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? I think we have a little, uh, well, first of all, I, I know we have a little bit more homework... I think we have a little, uh, first of all, I I know we have a little bit more homework to do on this. Um but I did want to know, uh, when is your presentation to Fish and Game, so we know we have enough time?
That was just exactly what I was gonna bring up. My uh meeting is September twentieth. I typically have to have my um agenda and projects and all the backup information to my lands committee one week prior, so they have time to review it. So a a couple weeks, you know, so.
We have a meeting September the twelfth, so.
Yeah, so mid, mid-September would be, the sooner the better, so to speak. And and again, this is um, this is all in theory, you know. We still have to make sure that we have access through Bear Hill Farm in order to get to this property. I'm sure that my uh lands committee wouldn't want to spend that amount of money on a parcel that they couldn't legally access, right? So um, you know, that's the contingency, just to-
It's about a half to three-quarters of a mile to access it from any point, if they don't do it through Bear Hill. Uh any other questions for Anne? Uh so we have a meeting September the twelfth. Uh we're gonna get more information. Uh Matt, that should give us plenty of time uh to get all the information we need uh to be able to make a decision on the twelfth.
So September twelfth would be the next time that you guys would take this matter up. But in the meantime, you'll check with the different departments, correct?
If we have any questions or Matt has any questions, he knows how to get ahold of you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for bringing this forward to us, Anne, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Town Administrator Report, halfway through the meeting here.
Oh.
New.
Slipping backwards.
New, new format here.
Just keep moving it around, don't you? I know we've been talking about it for the better part of two months now, but I do want to send one more reminder because people are still asking when the block party is, Saturday, August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Um just plan on being there all day, be great. Do want to thank the Tingsborough Fire Department for participating in the annual Touch a Truck event that the Pheasant Lane Mall hosts, and that was in their parking lot this past Saturday. In addition to our Tingsborough fire apparatus, they did also have a very cool Blackhawk UH sixty helicopter. Um so I put a picture of both of those in the TA report.
I could just interrupt you there, Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I had the opportunity to attend this event.
Oh, nice.
Uh just on the off chance, on the weekends, I sometimes stop by the firehouse. Got to talk into the microphone, sorry. So um I act- I got to attend this event over the weekend that it occurred. And um it was just really neat to see people going out in the towns various, from the area. Like Asho was there, Tingsborough was there. Um I got to learn a little bit more about the fire department, got to learn more about the uh Humvee that they own. So I didn't realize that we actually had one in town because the other one broke. And this was kind of one that we got from that whole, whole process, how you get them um from surplus.
Yeah.
And it was just interesting talking about that. And then I just touched base with um Pat Sands and such, just to see how the department's doing. And we did talk a little bit about, you know, their building and what their needs are and stuff. So I just wanted to just say, it was a nice little event for the community, but I also got to see all the equipment we have um out and about, so I liked it.
Very good, very good. Matthew Junior cried a little bit when I put him in, but that's, that's fine. He didn't like it. Uh do want to thank Bill Wilson from the Highway Department for installing permanent power, uh to the new fountains and lights at the footbridge in Lower Flint Pond. The Council on Aging has several upcoming events in September, and they can be reviewed by clicking the link here to their September newsletter. They do have a chocolate tasting event scheduled on September fourteenth at noon. I'm not able to attend, but those of you who are eligible, that sounds like fun. The interior demolition of the former Best Friends Pet Care Building is now complete, and the brewery um owned by Claddick Springs LLC is expected to resume in early fall. The legislature approved an act relative to equity in the cannabis industry during the last day of the regu- regular session. So we are waiting on formal guidance from our legal counsel as to the exact ramifications. But the new law does make it pretty evident that post-community agreement funding will be nearly impossible to account for moving forward unless it reflects a direct expense to the municipalities. Um there was some good news in the final budget. Um the legisla- the legislature did increase unrestricted general government aid in Chapter seventy funding, as well as a few other line items. So that will offset some of the uh decrease we may see this year. And did want to note the middle school feasibility funding summary below of the nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Only three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand was the final district share. Um that's the actual amount spent out of pocket. I apologize if I had that on previous slide. I don't know if it's a carryover, was that new information to you, the three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand number? Okay.
We had that before.
Did I? Oh, okay, wasn't sure.
Okay.
Sorry. Um Colin is not here this evening.
So I'll I'll follow up uh on the block, block party. Uh Mike Knight just called me, he's still looking for volunteers uh from six to eight P M uh the night of the block party to uh help with the uh the parking lots. Uh and with that, you'll get a free ride to the uh, probably the fireworks if it's that time. So uh anybody else would like to volunteer to help out? Uh you could call Shannon, you could call myself, and we we can hook you up with Mike Knight. Uh but he is looking for volunteers. Uh they've, they've, they've got most of them there, but six to eight timeframe, uh he's, he's had trouble. So anybody that can volunteer for that would be appreciated.
And the Board of Assessors, um they had an initial discussion about the Board of Selectmen's feedback regarding the hourly rate for the Senior Tax Work Off program at their meeting two weeks ago. And Colin is going to be attending their meeting tomorrow night to discuss. Uh shouldn't delay the implementation of the program, um but we should have an update for the board's next meeting. Didn't know if um there's anything you wanted to add to that point, okay. Uh the town hall roof project is now complete, it looks great. Um they replaced the entire roof and about eighty feet of rotten trim. And again, that project came in fifty thousand dollars under budget.
Okay, uh and then the Board of Assessors, uh about the Senior Tax Work Off, uh you know, as Matt said, Colin's gonna be uh working with them. Uh there's a couple of people that have been involved in that particular program for a long time. Uh and they wanted to talk to the Board of Assessors, who they they agreed to talk to them. Uh and they're just gonna work through a couple of small issues. Uh and then hopefully bring that back to us the next Board of Select meeting. As Matt said, they ensured me that they have plenty of time to do that uh and still execute on the program. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, discuss goal number six, the feasibility of establishing a Department of Public Works. Mr. Town Administrator.
That's great, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a brief presentation in the packet to give us some of the history of why this goal came up and what we've done to start exploring it so far this year. And then some next steps, which will involve some additional discussions with some other boards, but want to make sure that the Board of Selectmen are on board with the process we're looking to undertake to hopefully bring this to a fall town meeting um in October. So goal number six in its entirety was to investigate the feasibility of establishing a DPW, including not limited to pros, cons, cost savings, um and options for organizational structures. Uh as way of background, our current Highway Department building and structure would benefit from improvements regardless of what we do with the DPW. Um it may include either Highway Superintendent or a DPW Superintendent for additional um oversight and direction. And this is part of a long-term vision for the department that was started over twenty years ago. So how um how that has changed recently and what our long-term vision is at this time, some of the things we're going to discuss. Current Highway Department building requires short-term capital improvements, um whether we have a DPW or not. Um but the long-term vision for the town, we don't want to start making improvements into our highway building without knowing whether we're moving towards a Department of Public Works. So having this discussion now um is really one of the reasons that we haven't invested more in the Highway Department because this DPW question has been lingering. Certainly, it was part of the charter, and then it got delayed then. And we've been talking about it on and off with the Board of Selectmen since then, and we hired the engineer, et cetera. Uh so as we note, we're still one laborer down from nineteen ninety-nine. And since then, we've acquired more properties, we've acquired more public road miles. We have hired a town engineer. We're dedicating additional significant funding towards road maintenance, specifically through Road Maintenance Stabilization Fund, Cannabis Excise Funding, et cetera. And thankfully, we have a one-hundred-thousand-dollar state earmark for Public Works facilities improvements, and we can use that for design and or construction.
Uh Matt, just a quick comment. So um so I talked to, I've been talking to Jim Austin's uh quite, quite a bit about this. Um and the one thing he told me before the last budget meeting, uh which kind of resonated with me a little bit, uh is that in nineteen ninety-nine, uh he he joined the department. Uh and, you know, they're de- they're currently, as Matt said, down one person uh from where they were in nineteen ninety-nine. And besides the things that Matt mentioned, you know, the town center, you see them, you see the Highway Department there all the time, working in the town center, make sure that looks nice. Uh we have other properties that we have, there's more roads, uh you know, the stormwater, uh you know, we didn't do a tax increase here in Tingsborough for the stormwater. Uh we decided to use our existing resources, which the Highway Department was one, uh engineer was another. So uh they, we've expanded what we've asked of our Highway Department quite a bit, uh and they're still down a person. And the second thing Jim told me is that when he first joined in nineteen ninety-nine, the first thing they did was give, they did was give him a shirt. It said, "Tingsborough DPW." Uh so the discussion's been going on a long time. Uh you know, we made it a goal uh because, you know, we 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 talk about it all the time. The residents talk about it all the time. Uh roads is the number one priority. Uh we've invested a lot into our road program. Uh we used to put three-hundred-thousand dollars a year for the road program. Now we're putting nine-hundred-thousand to a million in on an annual basis, uh you know. And this is really just the next step uh in moving us forward and a lot of other reasons that Matt will probably go into here.
Yeah.
Uh any other comments or just let him, go ahead, Matt.
Keep talking along, and it's twenty slides, so I'm trying to go through it as quick as possible, but interrupt me at any time.
I won't, I won't interrupt you every, every slide, I promise.
I think we sort of covered the twenty-three-plus-year history. I'm gonna slip, skip slide four. Uh moving up to twenty-eighteen, as I mentioned, the charter was proposed, proposed a Department of Public Works that would assume the responsibility of the Tree Ward and Sewer Commission, Parks, Cemetery, Board of Highway Sur- Surveyors or Road Commissioners, more for legal purposes, um that were previously under the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health in regards to refuse, collection, disposal, and recycling. The employees were all going to be transferred to and become um an employee of the DPW, and it would be under the direct control of a Superintendent of Public Works. Um the charter did not pass, but there were no separate votes ever taken on the DPW section. Based on the feedback, we would probably recommend some changes before bringing it back, but do want to explain the two options we have. So options to form a DPW without a charter, a Home Rule Special Act. So just like we did with the Town Manager Special Act, we pulled that specific piece out of the charter and made it its own standalone special act. The same thing could be done to establish a Department of Public Works. Um there are several benefits to this. Uh do just want to note the language you see in the next few slides. Slide seven, eight, and nine are essentially exactly as they were in the town charter. And ten and eleven were some transition slides for the Sewer Commission and Cemetery Commission. And uh slide thirteen are my recommendations. If we were to go the DPW Special Act route, what changes would we make? Well, the big pushback that we heard during the charter was elected boards versus appointed boards. Um we could do a lot of the same things um with the DPW Special Act, but keep the currently elected boards elected. So my recommendation would be, that should be one modification to the Special Act, would be leaving the Sewer Commission and Cemetery Commissioners elected, unless they were to voluntarily tell us when we go talk to them that they're ready to make the change now. That's some um initial feedback that we should make. Uh I would recommend that um for strategic planning, um well, as I mentioned, elected Sewer Commission for strategic planning and policy direction. The one thing I would like to keep would be that the role of the DPW Superintendent would be to oversee contract and procurement and assist with the implementation of the policy direction for the Sewer Commission. So right now, the Sewer Commission as elected individuals have complete authority over the Sewer Department. We could certainly keep them elected under a DPW Special Act, but what the charter was going to do with the DPW was have the Superintendent in charge of procurement and things like that. Um if we're going to have a DPW Superintendent and have the Sewer Commission in the DPW, that function of contracting and procurement and assisting with policy direction really have to be included. Otherwise, you don't have a DPW. You just have a DPW Superintendent with a separate Sewer Department, which is really fifty percent of the department. Um so that's one area that, um as you'll see in a later slide, I'd be looking for either this board directly or a liaison from this board to go meet with myself and the Sewer Commissioners to talk about how we could keep them elected, but potentially have some DPW oversight. Uh the Cemetery Commission, um I would recommend changing them back unless they um are really looking to become appointed. And removing references to the Board of Health as it relates to trash and recycling because um we can still achieve all the goals of a DPW without um really tackling that at this point. Again, the the charter was really trying to take everything in one. Um if we're doing a DPW, I think it makes more sense to start off what we really need. What we really need is the structure and the oversight. There are things that may change in the future, it could be added in, but that's not something that immediately has to be taken in. Uh the Town Administrator's Office currently really already handles the contracting and procurement for trash and recycling. Anyways, it's really just the recycling bylaw that the Board of Health oversees. So whether they're in or out of the DPW, it's not, um I don't think it's worth that fight at this time. I think we should focus most of our efforts on discussions with the Sewer Department. Option two is another option, um that in my opinion's a little bit more difficult, and in speaking with town council would be a little bit more difficult. But you may remember, um there were some discussions in the Town Manager Special Act that, well, the Town Manager can create and abolish departments at will. There's two big caveats there. It's with approval of the Board of Selectmen and with any funding approval going to town meeting. Even if the Town Manager were to, you know, decree with approval of the Board of Selectmen that we have a Department of Public Works now, that wouldn't necessarily make any changes to mass general law. And the elected Sewer Commissioners, the Tree Ward and the Cemetery Commission, all of their authority comes from state statute right now that unless you have a DPW Special Act or a Town Manager Special Act or some other local option um approved at town meeting to change those things, um they would still retain their authority. So a Town Manager with Board of Selectmen approval could say, we have a Department of Public Works now. You, your staff report in, they really already report to the Town Manager under the Special Act. We would then have to go to town meeting with separate um bylaws or special acts to modify the authority given to those boards under state law. So the Town Manager has sort of a workaround to create a Department of Public Works, but really, you still have to check off all those other authority boxes. And in speaking with Adam Costa, he thinks um it's just much cleaner to do a DPW Special Act and just outline what everyone's new roles and responsibilities are in there. Once that Special Act is approved, it trumps all those other local laws because the legislature has approved our Tingsborough-specific uh Special Act. Hopefully, that makes sense as far as why a Special Act is cleaner. We don't have to individually modify the authority of any of those other boards separately. Pros, cons, and cost savings, open to your input on this. I have a lot of pros and not mer- many cons. It's not trying to be deceptive, I just see a lot of benefits to it, but I'm open to additional feedback. One point of contact for efficiency, coordination, oversight. Um we have a lot of departments, but most of this work is already handled in-house by either administration, engineering, and or the Highway Department anyways, forestry, cemetery, parks, recreation, sewer, streets and roads, and buildings and grounds. It's really not that many individual departments. Um potentially, some less duplication of services, opportunities to jointly provide services, increased coordination, potentially expanding services, reducing jurisdictional confusion, uh economies of scale, and improved harmony are some of the pros that I see. Some of the cons would be potential or perceived changes in the distribution or control of resources. And this relates a little bit to the policy and administration demarcation. If the Sewer Commissioners and or the Cemetery Commission lose a- any of their authority, it does make some, it's gonna be a change in town. And when policymaking versus administration changes, um you know, maybe it shouldn't really be under the con, but it could be seen as a con, and it could create some confusion, at least in the short term, until things are worked out. The costs are hard to narrow down. Um obviously, we need a DPW Superintendent, but there's two ways that's offset. One is by the fact that we intended to and never filled the position a long time ago when Ronnie Cochran left. So it's really gone unfilled since then. And secondly, it could be filled within a Town Engineer slash DPW, like Pepperell and a few other communities have, or, you know, promoting a highway forum into that position, for example. And it might change over time depending on the town's needs. If we have another staff engineer in the future, the next DPW after that may not have- If we have another staff engineer in the future, the next DPW after that may not have an engineering background. So I think in the interim, I would not be looking to hire an additional person, I would be looking to hire from within. So there wouldn't be any large immediate costs for staffing, potentially a raise, but a not a, a new body. Expanded office space at the highway and DPW, again, I think this is needed whether we have a DPW or not. They really need some love and care for that building, but it is a cost nonetheless. Savings, similar to the costs category, it's a little hard to calculate. I think the savings are really going to be in efficiency and/or increased levels of services. I don't see us, you know, laying off staff or letting people go through attrition because there's gonna be these massive savings. Hopefully, with the DPW director, supervisor, superintendent supervising things, he can make things run more efficiently, and we're going to get more work done. That's really the goal. And I just have a few examples in here of how water and sewer boards have changed a little bit in other communities, once they have a DPW. Some of the other communities, Air Danvers and North Borough, those boards really work to set the rate and provide policy direction to the DPW director. So that's something we could talk to the sewer commission about moving forward. My recommended next steps would be to meet with the sewer commissioners, the highway senior foreman and the town engineer to discuss this in more detail. Obviously, we've had some preliminary discussions going back a few years now and letting know this is coming up. But as we start to put pen to paper, we need to get their thoughts, questions, and recommendations, and talk about a timeline, and start to talk about the construction of a sewer garage at the existing site as well, which is another piece of this. They already have their own funding set aside to do that. My draft timeline would be to spend the hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-three, because we have to by then for design and some construction. October twenty-second would be this, October of twenty twenty-two would be my proposed special town meeting timeline. May twenty twenty-three, we would request any additional funding we need for design and/or additions, renovations. And requesting funding for the hiring or promotion of a DPW superintendent at that time. If we go the DPW Special Act route, we're not looking at legislative approval until at least June of twenty twenty-three. So if we move forward in the fall with the Special Act, we don't have to start requesting funding for DPW director and taking some of those next steps, at least until the May town meeting, because it could be six, nine, twelve months before the legislature even approves things. That is all I have.
I'll just add a couple of things. One of the things, when I review this, I should have mentioned too, is, you know, the sewer enterprise fund does not change. That means the sewer enterprise fund stays exactly where it is. I know every time we talk about any particular change with any department that has an enterprise fund, that's the first thing that residents want to know. So, you know, the sewer enterprise fund does not change, it's there for the sewer, you know, it's there to, you know, for the sewer, and to create it and to maintain it and everything else, so that does not change. And Matt put this together, I asked him to be very detailed on this. You know, again, this is a first pass. This needs a lot of work with, working with a lot of different departments. None of this is in stone, it's, it's a starting point to start the discussion with everybody. And I have talked to Matt, you know, I, I would like, you know, with the board's approval, to work with Matt, to work with each of the departments and see what their concerns are, how we might be able to modify this to make it something that, you know, we can get all the boards to agree to. That's my comments, I'll open up to the board. Selectmen, hold your. As Miles says he wants to talk.
Couple of questions. Matt, I know a bunch of towns have gone down this road in recent years. Are there changes in the Commonwealth around, like, administration of stormwater or other things that have made this more appealing? Because I've heard other towns doing, going down the DPW route and formalizing some of those things. But is that the, is that one of the reasons why?
So, you know, stormwater, especially in larger towns, is its own multi-member department now, just like highway. Here, our folks already wear a lot of hats, so we're lucky that we have cooperation, that people are working together without a real DPW. But I think certainly stormwater is one more reason to need a DPW or a DPW superintendent, because our Nipte's MS four permit has different sort of requirements to be compliant. It involves participation from conservation and highway and, you know, engineering and administration, because we need to do everything from outreach to street sweeping to reporting to testing. And no one department has all of the, the expertise to do all that, all of the funding. So we've been working together, initially it was with oversight from my office, and then conservation, Danielle had a really great background, but then it had to move to Jake and engineering. And we've all been doing it cooperatively, but it's really on good faith. In the larger communities, it, you know, compliance falls onto the DPW director, and the town manager can say to the DPW director, "You oversee almost all of the departments that are responsible for this permit." So it's, I think, a little bit easier to coordinate responsibilities. You know, right now, I have to go, you know, have conversations with the highway superintendent, for example, when we were starting to become compliant, and talk to them about stormwater and say, "How can we arrange our resources, our manpower, to make sure we're being compliant with this section?" And I don't know enough about their daily operations to understand how that's then affecting, you know, other things that they can do. But a DPW director who understands all of the DPW operations, when something like stormwater comes up and they have to figure out how to do that, you know somebody who's looking across all those departments and really focusing on it day to day. And I just think it's a more efficient, you know, operation to have, you know, more expertise being overseen at that level.
The other question slash comment. So I, I like the, the next steps to, let's, let's talk with the sewer commissioners, you know, with Jim and Jake. And I'm totally fine with, I thought I heard you volunteering to do that, and I, I like that too. My, my concern, so I think the next steps are great. We've got two months from, from now till the, the town, the October town meeting. I think as, you know, Matt's done a great job of pulling together a lot of the details that are in there. I do think that there's more work that needs to be done, and we need to vet this and make sure that it's very clear. So I, I think I'm concerned whether we can get it all done and make it easy for people to understand and say, "Yeah, I'm totally on board with this. This is a good thing for the October town meeting." So I like that it's aggressive, I like, I like people who, you know, want to get things done quickly, but I do think that there's a lot of stuff that's in there, so I, I have some reservations there.
No, no, I, I need to get more information on this, it's a good first draft, but I need to hear what they, the feedback is to you.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm gonna wait.
Okay, okay. Selectmen, Calabocas?
I like the idea, I think it, it just makes sense, right? That you consolidate everything, there's some oversight, and there's consistent structure, right? So at some point, as we grow and, you know, make changes, I don't, this is absolutely what I think that we need. There's no doubt in my mind that this is, that, that we need this.
Yeah, the one thing I'll, I'll, I'll kind of add is, you know, when we look at efficiencies, you know, when you look at a lot of these different departments, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you could ask some people, and they don't really know who they report to. You know, our, our organization here in Tingsborough has been around for thirty to fifty years without really hardly any changes. The town manager, of course, was a huge change to start out with, but beyond that, there, there hasn't been changes. Putting all of your, your highway, your infrastructure in one department just is gonna help out with efficiencies. There's a lot of examples I could probably give, but I'll start out with just kind of a couple. You know, one of the things as it relates to efficiencies is, is, you know, you know, the cemetery commission, you know, had a plow truck. They wanted it replaced, and, you know, we asked how many miles they had on it, they said ten thousand miles. So we had a twenty-year-old, twenty-year truck, twenty-year-old truck that only had ten thousand miles. I'm sure the highway department could have used that, you know? If we would have had a DPW, they would have been sharing equipment. There are certain things that the cemetery commission needs, and they outsource that equipment, that the highway department already has. You know, and as Matt said, I mean, you, you, when you have all these different departments, and most of them report to Matt, they get Matt involved in all these little things, right? So, you know, you know, Jake has a lo, Jake has a million ideas, great ideas. One of the things is, he sees a lot of irrigation issues, a lot of water issues in our, in our roads today, right? But every time he wants to do one of those projects, he has to ask Matt, and then they get with Jim, and he is the focal point, and Matt doesn't need to be involved in that. A DPW manager could make those decisions, they know what all the people are doing. They can focus them on, you know, fixing the darn roads. I mean, that's what I keep hearing over and over again. Every time we do a survey, you know, eighty-five to ninety percent of the people say the biggest problem is the roads. This is just another step in getting some efficiencies out of people we already have. I didn't see anything here where, first off, we need to hire somebody, except maybe a highway person, but we need that no matter what, not a DPW, not because of the DPW. That's needed no matter what, because we're still down a person from nineteen ninety-nine, which makes, you know, so we, we need to make up for that either way. And beyond that, you know, the, the costs are gonna be difficult to, to coordinate, but, you know, clearly for a DPW, you know, manager, it, it's, it's a different role, right? When we had the town manager, you know, going from a town administrator to town manager, you know, the key things with that was really with Matt, you know, it, it really was the best thing for the town. But, you know, Matt didn't have to ask for, you know, approval every time, you know, now he has the authority to do things, right? And stopped interfering in the day-to-day operations. His task really didn't change. He is the hiring and firing manager, so that is a little change, but, I mean, that's actually not a lot, not a lot of extra work, because before he had to go through a whole board to be able to do that. So, you know, his function didn't change. With the, with the DPW director, it is gonna change. So it is gonna cost more money, those we write up front, right? It is gonna cost more money, we're still looking at exactly prob, you know, how much it's gonna be. But we see that as, as a cost, you know? And then we need to come forward with, you know, even the highway department now with, and, and the garage and everything else. If you look at the highway department, that building is, is, is rundown, and, you know, we got some money from the state, the hundred thousand that Matt, it's a, it's a starting point, and we just need to kind of look at that. So there are gonna be some costs associated with it, and I believe there's gonna be a lot of efficiencies to it. You know, when Jake talks about all of these, you know, you know, irrigation projects that he wants to do, he goes, "These are fifteen, twenty thousand dollar projects if I outsource it. But I have the personnel, the highway department has the personnel and the equipment to do this, we just need to focus it on that." So I, I see a lot of room for efficiencies. You know, getting all these different infrastructure groups and, you know, under one, under one leader, I think would be a real positive. That's all I have to say. I heard somebody say, "Is everybody good with me working with Matt and working with all the boards and commissions to, to work on this?"
Do we need to formalize that at all?
I, I saw head nods, so I think that's a.
Yeah, let's just do that.
We have it with head nods.
You wanna take a vote?
Oh, I'm.
We don't need it.
Okay, we can vote.
You should have a vote on that, just to clarify.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize Chairman Cohane to work with the town administrator and all the boards and committees to figure out options and get more details on everything that was presented tonight.
Good, second.
The motion is second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes four zero zero.
If we don't make October, it's, it's Ron's fault now, too.
Evil face. Uh, we are down to new business, contract awards, police department, doors and railings.
Yes. Okay, in your pocket this, this evening, we have a request to approve contract with KNG. The capital asset management committee recommended and town meeting approved sixty-seven thousand dollars for this project. It came under budget of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions from the board?
Those, just as a reminder for everybody, those doors and those railings badly need it. This will be good.
Okay, have a motion, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the contract with KNG Remodeling, Inc. for fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars as presented and authorize the town administrator to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries four zero zero. Highway Road Services Materials, request to adjust compensation for COA van drivers.
Yes, we solicit quotes every one to three years for several services. This year, we put out line striping, crack sealing, catch basin cleaning, and bituminous concrete at the plant. So these costs are in line with what we have seen in the past. We were looking to award a contract for line striping to K five corporation for, I mean, oh, six, four dollars per inch. Crack sealing to Superior Seal Coat at nine dollars and eighty-seven cents per gallon. Catch basin cleaning to D and M Catch Basins at fifteen forty-nine per catch basin. And bituminous concrete to PJ Keating for eighty-five dollars per ton at the plant.
Any questions from the board?
How, what's the increase? Do, are these?
So these are as-needed contracts, so we only contract with the price, and we use as much as we can fit within the budget. So I don't have like a full dollar amount increase. And the actual amount of, you know, lines we paint, you know, per year and cracks we fill, some of it depends on how much money is available on the budget and where the needs are.
What I meant, sorry, I should have phrased it differently. So the per-unit cost that we've got here, do they, is that a five percent increase than what we had before? Is it ten, is it twenty?
I don't have it in, I can get that for you.
I'm just curious, because, I mean, as we start to run into these things, you know, inflation is hitting a lot of these items, and it, it's gonna be good for us to understand how big some of these things are. Yes, we do less of them, but the, the residents want to have the same services. So it would be good to understand when these types of things, is that, you know, what, what is the, the delta from, from what it was before?
Okay, so I'll, I'll get that to you after.
It's not very helpful, but Jimmy Huston's was cracking jokes at the bid opening, saying like, "Wow, remember when it used to cost?"
Yeah.
It was something from last year.
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Any other questions? Have a motion, please.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the contracts as described above for the highway services and materials and authorize the town administrator to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that passes four zero zero. Now the van drivers.
So we are having trouble getting van drivers, I'm sure that's news to everyone, right? Schools are having trouble with bus drivers, we're having trouble with van drivers. You know, inflation, they're feeling the pressure there. Thankfully, the LRTA provides grant funding to fund these positions, and we typically, year over year, have leftover money in the budget. So from that perspective, Barbara is not concerned that we won't have the funding available. Some facts on fiscal twenty-two, we had seventy-four thousand budgeted, we spent about fifty-four thousand, so we had twenty thousand dollars unused. The salary budget specifically was fifty-two thousand, and we spent thirty thousand. So she would like to increase the van driver salaries, we currently have three part-time drivers. They have an opening, and that job has been posted for months as well, so she feels that we're not attracting candidates due to the low pay. Based on their experience, and when they started, they have three rates, currently fourteen fifty, fifteen oh nine, and fifteen eighteen. She's proposing to hire the new individual at seventeen dollars an hour to bump that starting salary, and for the three individuals, based on their experience, bump them up to seventeen forty, eighteen eleven, and eighteen twenty-two, respectively. So about a three-dollar increase. Even if we used that new rate for any of our past years, we would still have plenty of money available in the budget.
That's through a grant, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any questions to the board? See, none, can have a motion, please.
Yes.
As presented.
As presented.
To approve the new rates?
I move, yeah, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the new rates as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries four zero zero. We are to the Conservation Director, Recreation and Parks Committee members.
We received interest from Ryan McMahon and Kim Diaz to join the committee. There are two vacancies, we're proposing that Ryan McMahon fills the appointment, he's been a previous member. Um, uh, we propose to reappoint him through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and Kim Diaz is a new member through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, and Ryan McMahon has also expressed interest in taking on the CPC appointment from the Parks and Rec Committee because Ed Smith is now the Finance Committee Rep. Just as a tidbit on the side, you're not approving that tonight. It's one of the reasons he's interested in joining again.
Thank you, Ryan and Kim, for stepping up, uh, being on the Recreation Committee. Great committee. Uh, any questions from the board? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Emily Bra- where is it?
Next one.
Yeah. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Ryan McMahon to the Recreation and Parks Committee for a term effective immediately and to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and appoint Kim Diaz to the Recreation and Parks Committee for a term effective immediately and to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-three.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that carries four zero zero. Selectmen reports, uh, starting from my left, Selectmen Moran.
I'm good this evening, thank you very much.
Selectman Eldridge.
I have nothing to add.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
I know it's already been said, but I'm going to stress again that the block party is this Saturday, this Saturday, August twenty-seventh. Uh, there is food trucks, vendors, um, performances. There is a children's, uh, entertainment area, uh, and fireworks at the end. So, um, come on down this Saturday.
See you there.
See you then.
I have nothing tonight. Uh, we have an executive session. Can I have a motion, please?
Yes. I move that the Board of Selectmen move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining as a public meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. And the Chair so declares SEIU Local Eight 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 Mid Managers, NEPBA Local Eight B Police Superior Offices.
Roll call vote, Selectmen Moran.
In favor.
Selectman Eldridge.
In favor.
Selectwoman Calabocas.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, thank you very much for watching tonight and, uh, have a good rest of your night.